All right, good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 15 September 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please, oh, Mr. Fantini, thank you.
I move to excuse Councilmember Young.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fantini and a second by Ms. Moulton to excuse Councilmember Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we all start off with announcements and committee reports. I've got a number of announcements. The first announcement I have is kind of a sad one. I'm saddened to share that John Stable, who faithfully served our community as a civil service commissioner, since his appointment by Mayor Maxwell in 2006, nearly 20 years ago, passed away earlier this week. John was a steadfast and valuable commissioner who gave generously of his time and wisdom. His dedication will be deeply missed. On behalf of the entire city, we extend our thoughts and prayers to his wife Vicki and his family, friends, and colleagues. Next, I'd like to report out on the very popular Residential Cleanup Day. So, over 300 participants, four trucks, 30, which equate to about 30 tons of garbage, seven appliances recycled, 60 yards of yard waste, 30 yards of wood waste, and 30 yards of scrap metal. So, thanks to Ops and Public Works for doing that twice a year, so cleaning things up. Also, we had a very successful, after a seven-year hiatus, the Senior Center hosted a Senior Resource Fair, and that was Saturday with the help of all the departments. So, again, with the support of the departments, we hosted approximately 500 people to connect them with various resources, including arts education, grief and emotional support, community and human services, food and health and wellness. Additional support was provided by a planning team of 13 volunteers. The Anacortes Activity Center Foundation that provided the financial support to fund operating and marketing expenses. There were 12 bakers that participated that provided enough goods to sell, raised nearly $4,000 to support the center program. So, a huge success. And thanks to everybody who participated, including the 60 vendors, 25 volunteers, and guests from Anacortes and surrounding areas. So, and thank you, Carl, who was the director there, for that great work. I've been getting questions about hanging baskets. So, yes, they're dying because they're not being watered, and that's kind of intentional, so they can dry out because it's time to come down this time of year. So, you just have to bear with about a few days of drying them out, and they will be coming down. So, thank you to the Chamber and Park staff for the installation and care of those baskets. And then, final announcements, I have Skagit County Technical Advisory Group will evaluate Guimas Ferry replacement options. So, we hear from a number of you all about the Guimas Ferry and electrification possibilities. But if you're interested in joining this, and there's a very long press release from the county, so it has a lot of the details in there. I'll summarize it by applications by September 26. Five Guimas Island residents and then four Skagit County residents that are not residents of Guimas Island. So, if you're interested in participating in that, to support the county in figuring out the long-range plan for the Guimas Island Ferry, you can find more information on the Skagit County website. So, that is all the announcements that I have. I will turn it over to council for, first up is the Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met last Thursday at 4:00 PM, and we discussed the Capital Facilities Plan General Government Section, which is on our agenda tonight, and we will delve into that in detail together here.
All right. Any questions for Finance Committee? All right, Public Works Committee did not meet as scheduled. Next up, Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Fiber Committee met last Thursday. Very quickly, we went over the numbers, and we're at, we're approaching 55% take rate citywide, and the construction project is very nearly done as well citywide. We're approaching 2,800 customers on net as well. We did some review of kind of updated cash flow and revenue projections, and we're on track for 2027. The fiber network will be a net contributor of revenue to the general fund. So, this is after paying off OpEx, operating expenses, and debt service. And then, just one other item I wanted to call out. So, the department had been basically reviewing some alternate network operations center providers. This is like the NOC, the kind of customer support 24/7. We've, you know, we've contracted that out to NOAANet. They're, we're reviewing alternate providers and provided some feedback around performance and the like to the current provider. Decided to stick with the current provider, and we're going to be seeing, basically, they're negotiating an updated contract with them, and we'll see that in front of council here in the next few weeks or months. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Fiber Committee? Next up, Economic Development Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday the 9th. Councilmember Young, Councilmember McDougall, and myself met with Ms. Snyder and Director Coleman. We were also joined by the Chamber of Commerce Director Jessica Kaiser after her presentation to council. We had a few follow-up questions that we chatted with her about. We spoke briefly about the reporting back, or lack thereof, that the city is getting from hotels. It sounds like it's really expensive for hotels in our area to opt into any sort of occupancy tracking. There's a couple of different softwares that are out there, but considering that most of, if not all of, our hotels aren't chains, there's not anything bigger that they can kind of latch onto or participate in without a pretty big hit, like a four-digit with maybe even five-digit investment. So, we kind of brainstormed there to see if there was anything that we could do to help or to get a sense of what occupancy is actually like. We're seeing lodging tax dollars increase, but sometimes it's hard to tell whether there are actually more heads in beds or if different hoteliers have increased prices. We also touched on volunteerism. One of the things that the chamber is really good at is getting people motivated to help down in the Information Center. And the city has a great group of volunteers that do a number of things, as does the Downtown Alliance. And there are some other folks in the community that are also doing volunteer tracking work. Ms. Snyder sent an email earlier today that we, I haven't had a chance to look over, but we're trying to streamline that to see if there's any way that we can capitalize on the availability of folks in town that both have the knowledge to do volunteerism, whether it be working on the planters downtown, or doing some mentorship, or doing business counseling, or if they're working with the Senior Center. So, there's more that we're going to work on with that. And then, next meeting will be a big meeting where we start planning for any extra work that we move forward with, with an economic development plan that we started working on with Western. And that was, I think, everything.
Okay. Any questions for Economic Development Committee? Any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just wanted to mention that the Fidalgo Bay Day was a big success again this year, and it was wonderful to see so much city participation, the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. And there might be some that I've missed because there were a whole bunch of booths with some great organizations, excellent activities for kids and adults, and it was just a wonderful way to see people come together for the 21st year and celebrate our marine environment and what we are doing to restore it as a community and with all these great nonprofits like the Marine Resources Committee. So, it was, it was just very encouraging in a time where I think that we need all the encouragement that we can get about what's going on, particularly with the environment. So, I was glad to be there. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to a public comment portion of the meeting. If this is any member of the public who should address the council, anything that is not on our agenda. We did receive one written public comment from Mr. Todd Harris, so that should be in the packet. And it was about motorcycles in the forestlands, and I think there's some valuable information that I can report from that one. The Forest Advisory Board voted on September 4th to recommend a updated forest plan for council, and they had a number of public meetings where there were comments about motorcycles in the forestland. The Forest Advisory Board chose not to recommend any major policy shifts, but those policies will come to council at a date to be determined. So, we still have that to come before council. So, so there you go. Okay, anybody, I don't have anybody signed up for public comment, but maybe you forgot to sign up, and you want to address the council now. Nobody online. And, okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items 5A through F, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubig, a second by Ms. Moulton, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are on to other business, and there's a lot of it. So, we'll start with item 6A, Downtown Alliance Consumer Survey. This is a presentation. And Mr. Coleman will probably introduce Ms. Hay whenever you're ready.
I also have to load the slide presentation. I apologized and have this done ahead of time. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation from
And a little bit closer.
Tonight, we're going to have a presentation from Jordan Hay, the Executive Director of the Downtown Anacortes Association, talking about their consumer survey that they completed earlier this year.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me in. I promised John I would do it in five minutes, so we're already.
All right. We won't count this against your time.
You can't. I'll just have to talk really, really fast.
Did I mention we have a long agenda tonight? No.
Yeah, exactly. Don't worry, I'll be quick. I really appreciate you having me in. I really appreciate all of the support and partnership we've had from the city. We couldn't do what we've been doing without it.
Glad to have you here.
Yeah. Present review. All right. Here we are. We've been up to a lot of stuff, kind of really quickly, a lot of things we've been working on. We bring people downtown, both through our social media and through events. We had 3,000 people on social media, 6,000 a whale of a sail, 2,500 Earth Day, and 700 at El's Night Out. All these things are special because they bring people into the businesses that are operating year-round. We care about downtown being beautiful and cared for. We're really proud that this is the first year that we did the hanging baskets and planters. We gracefully took that over from the chamber and did a full refresh of all the planters with new dirt, new plants. We really believe that people make our community. In just the first half of this year, we had 1,800 volunteer hours, yeah, which is worth, I think, about $85,000. And I wanted to share just two quick updates that are new that maybe you haven't seen before. The first is we're working on a facade grant program. We can't share the details yet, but we've been working with a number of different building and business owners downtown. This is a tool that lots of Main Streets use, where the Main Street Association does a grant that's half the cost to refresh the outside of the building, and it helps get things looking nicer. So, it's a way for us to invest, not just in the publicly owned part, but the privately owned part. And this is a good example from Vancouver, Washington. So, you can see, it's not like rocket science, but it looks a lot nicer. And the next one is the Locals Pass. Oh, sorry, we have a fail on the PowerPoint. Our Locals Pass, hopefully, most of you got it in your mail last week. If you didn't, let me know. I've got some extras. This is an idea that was, came from a lot of our storekeepers in our monthly merchants meeting to bring locals downtown, to make sure locals realize how much they're loved and appreciated, and to do it in the shoulder season, as we're stuck between summer and Christmas. But the thing I'm really here is to talk about our community survey and to talk about what we're learning. I've got five minutes, so at the end, I've got a QR code, and our website has it, if you want to read the full survey. But you can see, first, people love downtown. We asked them to describe downtown with three words, and you can see that walkable, friendly, and quaint came up, as well as historic, charming, parking, you know. I didn't filter out the negative words, but there aren't many, you can see. And the next thing we ask is what brought people downtown, and I think the most interesting insight for us here is that the things that bring people downtown on a daily and a weekly cadence are the ones that add up to the most days per year on average across the full population, which is not shocking when you think about it, but it actually kind of changes how I think we think about how downtown works. And one of the most interesting surprises is that the most days per year was from walking. So, we have a not insignificant group of people who walk daily and who walk weekly. As an opportunity for civic engagement, for public space, it's also an opportunity for our businesses that they're walking by on a daily or weekly basis. So, when I think about things like the downtown streetscape plan that we're starting to work on, making it so that it's a really beautiful place to be, to walk, to be a pedestrian, will bring those people back over and over again. But then, other daily and weekly activities, like eating out and work, bring people downtown a lot, as well as things that end up being more of a weekly or a monthly cadence, like coffee shops, shopping, and cultural events. I was surprised, when we did the math, it adds up to 25 days a year. So, we've incredibly culturally activated town, I think. We asked people to rate us on a five-point scale on a whole bunch of things, to help us understand where we're stronger and weaker, and we are consistently strong on things with people feeling like the atmosphere is safe downtown, and like the customer service and the friendliness of the folks in our businesses is extremely high. So, I think those are really great strengths to build on. I would love, over time, to see us over four stars on everything, but we're looking pretty good now on these. Some of the areas where we didn't score as well were around business hours, product selection, price for value received, parking. So, I don't think any of this is shocking, but we pulled a lot of detail in free text about the kinds of things that people would like to see. And I think that sets us to start working with eDesk and with the new economic plan that you all are building on a list of businesses we'd like to recruit, and starting to think in a strategic way about how we can tell people the kind of businesses that people would like to see here, and then actually bring them back. So, here are some of the top takeaways. The first, people love downtown, but they really want more reasons to come. So, I think a lot of the feedback we saw in the free text was that people wanted more of that everyday activity. They wanted to be able to buy kids' shoes. They wanted grab-and-go food. You know, I think there are some things that we weren't surprised about, that people want bakeries and Indian food, but there were some that I was surprised about. Sort of this, like, really hungering for that day-to-day rhythm was one of them. Events are strong and valued. People thought we have the right amount of events. Almost no one thought we needed less. Only a few people thought we needed more. And Arts Festival and the Farmer's Market were the favorites. The thing we did see is people wanting more of that daily rhythm and stuff in the off-season. When I looked at the top 15 events, you could see, most of them are in the summer or Christmas, and the other months are just kind of sparse. People talked in a lot of ways about physical improvements that are needed, so places to sit and gather, safer pedestrian crosswalks, and beautification. We heard that businesses matter. I put up a chart of some of the different kinds, and I've talked a little bit about it, but really looking for diverse, affordable restaurants and shops, maybe some more hours on weekends and nights in a way that still feels comfortable for the businesses, because it's hard to run some of these businesses. And we got feedback, actually, that people wanted to start businesses, but it was hard to find space, which I think is true. We really, you know, most of our vacancies are taken before they're even announced. We heard that arts and culture is core. So, 58% said arts are very important. So, that's really, really high, much higher than I expected. And people wanted to see it integrated into downtown experience, particularly public art and performance. And that's me. Thank you for listening. This QR code and our website have the full details of the survey, and I built in tons and tons of direct quotes from people, so that you can get a flavor for what they actually wanted. And I really appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. All right, next up is Resolution 6B, and this is Resolution 3187, 2025 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments. And this is an action item, and I'll turn it over to Lodging Tax Chair, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I think we included all the requisite details in the Agenda Item cover sheet, but in summary, we are required under the statute and under our own code to have equal numbers of representatives authorized to collect tax, as well as representatives of entities that are eligible to receive lodging tax awards. It has, I think, always been challenging to find representatives from hoteliers who are willing to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. We had one resignation because he sold his hotel. That was Mark Leone. And so, for reappointment for this year, we have just recently received our third hotelier candidate, and that is listed in the packet. And so, we are now ready to appoint the committee. We have already advertised for lodging tax applications for grant awards. Those have all come in, and we are ready to do the work of the committee of reviewing those and making a recommendation to council. We just need to reappoint for 2025.
All right. Any questions I think that Mr. Walters or Mr. Coleman could probably answer? And I just want to say, I appreciate the willingness to volunteer. LTAC, as everybody knows, that'll, it'll, there will be some fun challenges, I think, coming up in 2026, so. All right, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Everything looked really good to me, so unless there is any comments or objection, I move to adopt Resolution 3187, approving the appointment of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members for 2025.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Fantini and a second by Ms. Hubig to approve Resolution 3187. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're moving right through. Item 6C, this is Other Business, North Star Opioid Settlement Funds. This is a proposal, presentation, and I'd like to welcome Monica Negrila and George Kosovich, and I butchered those names. You can say them properly for the record. And also, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Ron Wiesen from County Commission. So, thank you all for being here, and whenever you're ready, and if you need some assistance to get the, it's already on the way.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience as we are loading. Okay, I think we are official. Thank you so much, Mayor Miller, and good evening, and good evening, members of the council. As Mayor Miller mentioned, I'm Monica Negrila. I am the Director of Strategic Initiatives at Skagit County, and I support the North Star Initiative in my role. And as you heard, we also have Commissioner Wiesen with us tonight. Very grateful for that. And my colleague from Public Health, George Kosovich, Community Services Manager, is also here. So, we are going to co-present tonight. So, council members, we are here tonight because we are seeking your direction on a North Star Initiative. And this is a proposal to collaborate on a regional arena with the other cities and with the counties, utilizing opioid settlement funds. For those members in the audience not familiar with North Star, this initiative started a couple of years ago, when the county commissioners and the four cities in our county got together and expressed interest in collaborating regionally, especially on unique and complex issues, starting with behavioral health and homelessness. And so, this proposal tonight is aligned with that North Star collaborative and expressed interest in regional collaboration. So, we are hoping tonight to start with a brief background on what the opioid settlement funds are. And next, we want to dive in in showing you and presenting you the proposal. And then, we hope to talk a little bit about some next steps, and we also have a couple of other updates for you. So, starting off, really, the opioid settlement funds have originated in lawsuits against opioid manufacturers and distributors for their role in the opioid crisis. Legal action began as early as 2018, and after a couple of years, settlements began. As of earlier this year, eight settlements have been concluded. In the last month or so, a ninth, another settlement concluded. The data and the numbers that you have in your presentation tonight are current as of June 30th, and they do not include the most recent settlement with Purdue manufacturers. So, to date, again, with data as of June 30th, without the most recent settlement, our region is scheduled to receive over $8.6 million in opioid settlement funds. That includes all of our cities and the county. And then, to date, of those 8.6 millions, 2.6 millions have been distributed. And so, those are available in the bank account. And so, the funds that we receive may be used for opioid abatement and recovery efforts. Continuing a little bit on the background, I know that, I believe that this is not a new item for you all. You had previous conversations with our teams and also internally, as you brainstormed, and ways in which you may use the funds. Most recently, at the June 6th joint meeting between city councils and mayors and county commissioners, we also had a great conversation about opioid settlement funds, where we heard expressed interest from all of our cities to explore options for regional projects. And also, we discussed briefly some of the priorities that you're going to see here. and also we discussed briefly some of the priorities that you're gonna see here in just a couple of minutes. So moving into our proposal, we tried to prioritize, of course, regional projects while also recognizing that cities may want to dedicate certain funds for individual city needs, and so you're gonna see that the proposal offers for that balance between regional and local investments, and that is actually one of the feedback and discussion points that we would like to have with you later on tonight. And then, of course, it also takes into consideration, as I said earlier, the discussion that we all had at the meeting, the joint meeting in June, and the priorities discussed at that time. So specifically, again, with focus on that regional approach, we are proposing an 80/20 divide between focusing 80% of the opioid funds and allocating them towards regional projects and leaving about 20% for city allocations. Again, this is up for discussion. We would love to hear your feedback on this. And so in terms of the priorities identified, we have the Skagit Center startup, we have startup cost for the Skagit Star Center as one of the main priorities, followed by bridge housing and recovery housing. These priorities have been informed by the various task forces, community service providers that participate in North Star. Also, we heard the needs from our first responders and correspondence programs, and these have been then also discussed by the leadership team of North Star. Also on your screen, you see the funding breakdown between the various jurisdictions and Skagit County. And so with that, just a couple of more words about the priorities. For the Skagit Star Center, for the startup cost in particular, we are looking at supporting the organization with hiring, training, and infrastructure, full operations until they are gonna be able to fully be set up and be able to start billing. For the short term bridge housing, and this is, George is gonna tell you a little bit in more detail, this is a short term transitional housing program, and you're gonna see it's a missing piece on the housing continuum, so that's one of the reasons why I made the priority list. And last but not least, the need for recovery housing in our region as an evidence-based program, it's in high need for expansion. So with that, I'm gonna invite, I'm gonna pause and invite George to walk us through the details for the three priorities.
Thank you, Monica. So Monica did a nice job of setting up the background, some of which you all have heard in a joint meeting or previous discussions about opioid settlement before, and then kind of a little bit of the why and then the need. What I want to do is walk you through a little bit more detail what this would actually look like, what is it, what would it look like from a kind of countywide collaborative with four cities and a county working together, spending these funds collectively. We've been out visiting with the other councils as well last week, and we have another follow-up meeting, and really the, what we, what we think is that by working together, we can make some things happen that individually our cities and our county wouldn't be able to make happen on our own. And so that kind of informs the setup of this project or the proposal. So we have it in really kind of two buckets, and if you've seen the spending plan or the revenue plan from the settlements, there, it's kind of all over the place. So there are currently eight settlements. Some of them spend over one-time payments, some of them spend over 17 years, kind of in an uneven path. We have about 2.6 million in the bank, and that's, as Monica mentioned, as of the end of the state fiscal year. It's a little bit more now, if you looked in the city coffers, but really kind of front-loaded. So we've received about a third of the funding upfront that we're going to over these 17 years. So we have to be a little bit cautious about spending that down. The funding trickles down over time. And so that's why kind of in discussion with our task forces and the leadership team, we've recommending kind of some commitments that follow a two-year category so that require some startup costs and some continuity of funding, and then also looking for those one-time investments that because the money's front-loaded, you can provide it and it doesn't require ongoing funding. And so that's what we split here. As Monica referenced, the two housing categories are both recovery housing focused, so they're really targeted people in a different stage in recovery. For bridge housing, the intent is for people that are in very early recovery. And one of the things that we found through assessment and discussion with our partners is we have some major gaps there. So folks can go to detox, and then they might have a period of time that they have to wait until they go into the, either inpatient treatment or until they have their, their kind of next step. They might go be doing outpatient treatment, but it takes some time to make that happen. And that's a really vulnerable time for people, and a lot of people don't follow through. So they're not able to follow through. They do well in detox, they have a two-week gap, they either exit back into homelessness or back into their home environment where they were using. It's just not a great place to be. And so what we're talking about here is just kind of buying out some space through a provider that keep that person safe over that period of time. In terms of recovery housing, this is an existing model we have in our communities. In Skagit County, we have nine recovery houses. We have seven Oxford houses, but we don't have enough capacity. There are typically wait lists, particularly for different demographics. Women are really hard to serve in terms of recovery housing. There's not much capacity there. People with kids, there's no service available, and this is transitional housing, so really typically up to a year, structured housing with accountability for folks to help them make that next step, really most of the time coming out of treatment. So that's kind of the recovery housing piece. What we're, what we are suggesting here is a two-year funding commitment because these would be starting up new programs. In terms of one-time investment opportunity, this is really the startup funds for the Star Center. This was something that, we've got a lot of capital for the physical construction. The building is set to finish soon and open in February. What we've been seeking out is really startup funding for the people side, so this is gonna be operated by a nonprofit. Forty-eight beds of crisis acute detox and treatment, 75 new employees, and it requires kind of the startup of a medical office project. And so we've gotten a little bit of funding from the state legislature. We have asks in to the BHASO, but a piece of this is collectively from the county and the city seeking to supplement those startup funds.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Star Center, is that, is the Star Center exclusively substance abuse treatment or is it mental health as well?
It's both. So it's three components, so mental health crisis stabilization, which could also be a substance use. The detox is, it's an acute detox which is focused on substance use, and then it's a unit of co-occurring treatment. So one of the designs that we built into that is the ability to serve both mental health, substance use, either or and both together, because that's a major challenge.
And this is in Cedar Wally? Just outside Cedar Wally?
It's in Cedar Wally.
It's in Cedar Wally. It is to replace the Northern State facilities that we used to have?
It, some of those beds, the treatment beds, will replace the treatment beds that are available, although there'd be co-occurring. Detox, we already have a detox in Burlington that will relocate to Cedar Wally, but it'll be a higher level of care, so acute rather than subacute. And then crisis stabilization, we don't have in Skagit County, so this would be new beds.
And the mental health facility is already there, is that right?
The evaluation treatment is, facility is already there. That's primarily involuntary treatment, yeah.
And so what's being added is stabilization, co-occurring, and?
Acute detox, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Great questions. So that's kind of the description in words. What I want to walk through a little bit is budget, some expected outcomes and results for these different commitments and investments. So on the recovery housing side, on bridge housing, we've been in consultation with a couple of different providers talking about this concept of short-term stays, and we have some that are interested. Here, the goal is really about reducing overdose risk and increasing the likelihood that somebody makes it through their treatment. It's really about keeping somebody safe and on the path that they've started towards treatment. For recovery housing, it's a little bit different. This is about maintaining recovery housing stability and getting to permanent housing. We have, we have a history of recovery housing providers in Skagit County. There are a couple of nonprofit providers that, that own housing, and typically they're, they can both construct or lease housing. The estimates here that we could add 25 or 30 beds is just based on our track record through kind of the operating cost of a recovery house. So we think we could get, based on that history, 25 or 30 beds. If we have cities that are interested in this, we would likely do an RFP to identify that provider, the location, to make that happen. In terms of the one-time investment opportunity, you know, really what we're getting is 17,000 bed nights of stabilization detox co-occurring treatment. The goal of that program, though, is diversion from the emergency department, from the jail, so obviously treating folks in a less costly and restrictive environment, and the associated health benefits, so improved health and well-being from the treatment and recovery that people will receive in that space. So now to the spreadsheets, what you have to look forward to on an evening meeting, but I'm gonna try and walk through this and make it real clear. This first slide is kind of thinking about, this is a joint project between cities, four different cities and Skagit County. The next slide includes the city breakdown, so you can see Anacortes on the list. But again, through the end of the state fiscal year, we have about 2.6 million, and we just kind of roughly allocated these, assuming the cities are interested in this joint funding between the Star Center and these two housing models. So nice round numbers, a million dollars of Skagit County funds, 500,000 of city joint funds for a million five for the Star Center. That leaves a portion available. As Monica mentioned, one of the things that we heard is some interest from cities in holding back some funds for their own priorities and needs, and so in this case, that's 20%. That leaves an amount remaining available, and then the next two line items are a total for those two years between the detox bridge housing of 150,000 and additional recovery housing of 650,000 that gets to those different projects. In terms of how does this break down, again, cities received a few more payments since this slide was made, so there's a little bit more in the bank than reflected here, but it shows, you know, essentially how does that stack up each city using the formula that funds were allocated? What does it leave remaining for the city? And as Monica mentioned, this doesn't include the two newest settlements that, and there's always the possibility of more that would add to this, I think.
Yeah, and to add to that in your packet, because I know a couple of you had asked about the new settlements, and I have, I use our finance director as he's the current money guy, and that's, you know, pretty close, and then the future money, money guy is our city attorney, because she's working directly with the settlement attorney. So that's what's in your packet is the, is the future settlements, but I understand you, you set it upfront, but make sure the council heard that those numbers are as of the 30th of?
Yeah, so there's a little bit more money to work with than we're showing here. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Monica to kind of walk through some questions for you all.
Thank you, George, and thank you, council members and Mayor Miller. So really, the options for discussion tonight, we would like to propose our, if, what we are proposing seems like a no-brainer, we would love to hear you approve it as presented, or of course, we would love to hear your direction and your thoughts on a different funding allocation if, let's say, the 80/20% formula does not seem like it's something that you can work with, we would love to hear your direction on that. And of course, we would love to hear any other options or proposal you would have. In particular, the questions that we would like to get started with are, are you supportive of the three proposed investment areas to begin with? The Star Center, bridge housing, and recovery housing? And then, as we mentioned, we would love to hear your input on the formula, and then last but not the least, are there any alternative directions that you have for us or priorities that you would like to propose for a regional collaboration?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Star Center startup money is assumedly a one-time expense.
Yes.
Which we would pay for with what is essentially one-time revenue. The housing is ongoing. What happens after year two?
That is a great question. So far, we envision those projects as being pilot projects, and so we do have a plan for the first two years. After that, we may come back, or we are gonna look to identify new revenue strings, but yes, this, those would be ongoing.
And your proposal, your spreadsheet that you just went past there, your proposal is that we fund all three of these buckets?
Yes.
That's how the numbers add up there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question kind of along the lines of Mr. Walters' thing. Sounds like we're not quite sure how the housing keeps going, but with the Star Center startup, I know that is a one-time investment, but I think also the model is pretty highly reliant on Medicaid reimbursements. So I guess my question would kind of be along the same, same path there. Is there any kind of, you know, with everything going on with Medicare, Medicaid, and all of that, is there any B-plan there?
So I think that's also a valid question with uncertainties around Medicaid and Medicare. That is something that we are considering. We've been in conversations with the BHASO as they are also taking on some, some of the crisis services, so we hope in some more partnerships with them, but also, yes, that could be a risk. And if, George, you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we've talked to the provider about. One of the, one interesting thing is talking about the provider who do this work is, they'll tell us, there hasn't been a stable Medicaid program for a long time, so like waiting for stability is a challenge. I think the biggest issue is with the uninsured category, and so in thinking about contingency planning, it's about ensuring that the maximum number of people qualify for Medicaid or able to confirm their Medicaid status. That seems to be the biggest risk in, in what's happening now is that people will be disqualified from Medicaid, and particularly for the crisis stabilization where we want to ensure law enforcement drop-off. We don't want to have law enforcement in a situation where they're, they're looking at somebody's insurance card and deciding where do they go. We want, we want this facility to be open to anybody that needs mental health crisis stabilization, and so the, the biggest concern would be for folks that are removed from Medicaid, working with the BHASO, which currently funds that role and kind of ensuring they're able to do that going forward. Okay. And then just one other question at the risk of having a little egg on my face, because maybe I missed this. I remember back when we all got together for the day event, the symposium that was done. One of the things that we had talked about in the, the elected officials outbreak was really the importance and necessity of having some kind of interlocal or document governing how we're all going to work together. And I know that for me, one of the things that's kind of important before we, before I approve and vote for funds is to kind of make sure that that, that framework is in place, so I'm just curious how we're, how we're looking there.
Yes. Thank you so much for bringing that up. It's actually the segue to my last update, but I'm just so happy to do it now. So we actually have another joint meeting scheduled coming up for September 30th, and the purpose of that meeting would be to discuss in more that draft interlocal agreement that actually some of your fellow council members have been on a work group in the past couple of months, working hard in drafting that agreement, so thank you so much, Council Member Walters and Moulton. You've been part of that work group along with Mayor Miller. So yes, work has been done, and we are excited to bring that draft to you in September, and then hoping to have legal support and review and hopefully have it ready by the next joint meeting that's scheduled for November 6th. So that's kind of like coming up.
So you're saying you don't want money to go to an organization that doesn't exist yet? That's probably, that's probably a good call.
More or less.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, to follow up on that, though, I mean, I think what Mr. Fantini is asking for is not quite addressed by that inter-local, because it really sets up this framework. It's mostly an advisory framework. It doesn't set up a separate organization. Under all your prior slides, what we would be doing is cutting a check to the county, not necessarily to anything called North Star.
Yes and no. There are options, actually. Depending on your preference, you could write a check directly to the providers, or if you prefer, yes, you could write a check to a county, and then the county could distribute it. So, that is up to, again, your preference.
Well, I didn't mean to get too deep into those mechanics. I mean, my point is, if we were to cut additional checks to anybody, we would need, assumedly, some other framework, right? I mean, why are we sending the check? There needs to be a receipt.
So, I'll help you out here, because I had a brief, we've had a brief discussion with legal earlier today about what would be the mechanism. And there's a, I'll have you answer the question about what you've discussed with other cities, but, you know, one mechanism could be just through budget authority and designating that, could be an inter-local, could be a resolution. So, yeah, those weeds are actually kind of important to ultimately make it happen. So, anything to add there, Ms. Wetnam? Okay. Anything to add to the numbers that you provided for the dollars?
No, I just wanted to clarify that the spreadsheet in your packet that has perspective numbers does include the two most recent settlements, the Purdue and the generic eight manufacturers. So, as far as we know, all of the settlements that are on the table are reflected in the numbers that staff put in the packet.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for coming from the county. I think that this has been our desire to have a really transparent, thorough presentation ahead of time. So, the meetings you guys have been doing with council members, with the public, has been incredibly helpful. And I think that this presentation really reinforces the work and actually listening to what our concerns are as constituents and as a council. The three proposed programs, Star Center, which essentially is completely covered for construction, correct?
Yes.
So, it's just startup, and that is adjacent to the jail property? No, where is that located?
So, the Star Center is located off of Highway 20, right out, it's still part of Seadrally, but it's-
Over there, okay.
Out of Curtham.
So, that's great. I guess my concern, and I, so I want to say that the Star Center is well on its way. The bridge housing and the recovery housing, since 2020, our HACs committee has been meeting with providers, trying to understand the dynamics, and a lot of kind of loose ends of what it means to be in crisis, either mentally or with chemical dependency. And it is incredibly difficult for the person in crisis, or the family, or friends, trying to support that patient. And so, trying to figure out a way that we coordinate as a county is incredibly important. And I think that the bridge housing and the recovery housing are two components that we absolutely need more of. We've seen successful recovery housing. The bridge component after detox, before you actually get into long-term treatment, is just this black hole where no one really knows how to support a friend or loved one. So, we need all three of these, hands down, for our county, and working together as a county makes the most sense. I guess my concern is, when we're looking at the numbers for the two-year program commitment, 150,000 and 650,000, just, it seems like a drop in the bucket. So, I get, I'm concerned about committing that money. It's not a lot for these programs. What is the county's plan to partner with grants, or find additional funding to make those programs happen?
So, there is a lot of need out there. We have a pretty active housing task force, which one of your council members sits on, that is looking at how do we expand capacity? How do we build a pipeline of projects and programs? I think, you know, when you look at the housing required, particularly for affordable levels, it's a lot, and the only way to get there is kind of one project at a time. And so, I think that's what we're trying to do, is, you know, leverage as much funding as we can, and even bring some new funding in, like the settlement funding, which provides, you know, a new source of funding for a particular population that we can leverage towards housing.
And I think that makes sense. I think that going to our state-level folks, representation to show that we are trying to work together, does count, hopefully for grant opportunities, too. But I, that's kind of my hesitation, right, is when we also have projects that community members or staff have come to us saying, and I appreciate the 20%, but just trying to figure out, you know, where do we leverage it and actually get the best results? But, that being said, you know, I think this is a really good discussion to have, and I think that you've identified, or we as Skagit County residents and cities have really identified three really incredibly important components. So, we got to keep moving on this, but thank you for, thank you for your work so far.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, thank you very much for your work in the presentation, and I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Cleland McGrath as to the importance of if we can get the bridge and recovery housing done. I'm curious, you mentioned that there is like 17-year payout for some of the current settlement. Is that money a drop in the bucket for this, what it looks like 400,000 a year, or is it already allocated for other stuff?
Yes, so, no, we have not allocated any other funds to any other projects. And so, the numbers that you've seen tonight represent about one-third of that total 17-year allocation. And so, as George mentioned earlier, it ebbs and flows. We did receive a larger amount upfront. Money will start like trickling down in the next year, so it's a little bit, you know.
So, roughly 5 million over 17 years, if I'm thinking one-third, two-thirds?
Yes, another, yes.
Okay, and so, 400,000 a year, that could theoretically at least extend the housing ask for several years.
For a few, yes.
The other settlements that are pending, are we talking kind of similar dollar figures, similar timeframes? Or do we have line of sight to what those are at this point?
The largest one, the Purdue-Sackler, I haven't been able to get an estimate out of the AG's office, but a million, my calculations say about a million dollars for Skagit County as a whole, based on the math. It depends on how many cities settle, but, so instead of eight and a half million dollars, we're looking at nine and a half million dollars.
Nine and a half, okay, thank you.
So, I did contact Keller-Rorback and kind of pinned them down to give them an estimate of what Anacortes's share is, and that's reflected in that spreadsheet that's in the packet. I think the City of Anacortes expects to get about $100,000 from that Purdue-Sackler settlement over the course of a number of years, so.
Mayor Miller?
Before I go to you, any other council members?
Sure.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I can't help but wonder, you know, what happens after those next two years. But, we have to start somewhere, and all of these, three of these things, we have dire need of, that's been clearly demonstrated over and over. And we can, if we don't put our money together, how is anything going to happen, right? So, part of it's an act of faith, and it's, I think it's, it's a tough one, but that's part of the whole point, is that we're all in this together, the county, the cities. This is something that will benefit all of us and our people, and it's so important to have these resources that are lacking. It's desperate times, so I do support these three projects, and I'm not sure about the 80/20, but I am in favor of these projects and are contributing to them. Are contributing to them.
Thank you.
And I'll go to Mr. Walters, unless Ms. Hubick, you have anything, Ms. Hubick?
No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Walters?
To walk through the spreadsheet a little bit, it looks to me, let me just summarize it, and you tell me if I'm right. So, it looks to me like, according to your presentation, we have received close to 280,000, and this information is a little bit dated, so it's a little bit more than that, right? But, round numbers, 280,000 we have received already, and you're asking us to spend 80% of that. We've already spent a very small portion on the drug dog, right, something on the order of 10,000 or 15? And then, in future years, in 2026, through the next, the following seven years, we'll get somewhere on the order of $50,000 a year, and then after that, it's like 35. So, we've already received this 280, and if we spend more or less all of that, maybe with 50 left over, we'll receive another 50 next year, so then we'll have 100, receive another 50 after that, then we'll have 150. So, that's kind of the rate that we'll be receiving new money. And that includes Purdue, as you've said a couple of times. Okay, so, let the record reflect that the city attorney was nodding throughout everything that I just said. Could you also tell us, what are the bookends on what we can spend this money on?
Sure. So, the restrictions on how the money can be used are laid out in the one Washington MOU that was entered into between the State of Washington and the various jurisdictions that are participating in these settlements. And they break down the allowed uses for the funds in three categories. One is treatment of opioid use disorder, one is prevention strategies, and then there's this kind of other strategies category. So, they further break it down into, so funds can be used to treat opioid use disorder, to support people who are in treatment and recovery, to provide connections to care, better resources to providers, to make sure people are getting connections to the services they need, to address criminal justice needs. There's an allowance for support to help moms and babies that are dealing with opioid-related issues, prevention of overprescription and distribution, prevention of misuse, services to prevent overdose deaths and harms, there's support for first responders, leadership, planning, and coordination-related expenses, training to help prepare those people that deal with individuals at various points, and then research on opioid abatement. And each of those categories have a number of examples that kind of illustrate what those things could mean. So, you know, in the categories of prevention and treatment, there's a fair bit of latitude to be able to decide how best to spend those funds.
So, it seems to me fair to say that these proposals are the most closely targeted at the purpose of the money, and maybe that ought to weigh heavily on our minds as we're choosing what to spend that money on. Also, I saw on the news that there is some new opioid being found on the street that is 100 times more powerful than fentanyl. So, maybe it's the case that we ought to get prepared, stand up more infrastructure, and be able to say, we know how to do this, in the case that we need to do a lot more of it in the future. So, I guess I would weigh heavily in favor of taking this approach. I wonder even about the 20% remaining, because again, this might be the most important thing that we could spend our money on. But I know that Parks may have some suggestion as well. I'd kind of like to hear that before we commit to the county's proposal. And if Parks's suggestion is a good suggestion, if the police department's suggestion is a good suggestion, maybe they are good suggestions irrespective of how they are funded, and maybe we should find ways to fund them regardless. But, still, for a restricted revenue source, I would think we would want to commit it to the appropriate need upfront and then move on. My, I guess my final question for our presenters, though, is how do we know that the money that we would allocate to the county through this process wouldn't supplant other funds that you were planning on spending anyway?
We could enter into an agreement to clarify that that will not happen, and also-
Well, so, for example, for the Star Center-
Right.
I kind of assume that you had some plan for how to stand up the employees and the training and the infrastructure that you highlighted there, in the absence of this money?
Right. We would enter into an agreement with the provider, right, and then we will have certain criteria for them, to keep them accountable. Is that my answering the question?
But in the absence of this money, what were you going to do? I mean, if you didn't have this 1.5 million dollars for the Star Center-
Oh.
What would the county have done?
I know that currently, the county already secured, well, the county under the North Star initiative secured some money through the state, and we also have an ask to the BHASO for additional funds. And then, the alternative in our conversations with the providers might be that instead of being able to be fully up and ready to start full operations in February, they might have a staggered and slower startup. So, they might start with just some initial services, and then slowly, as they build up ability to bill for services, then they would hire additional staff progressively.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I know what the BH stands for, but maybe remind everybody else what the ASO stands for.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry for that. Yes, Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization, yes. Thank you.
All right, to other questions, council. Again, I think the mechanism is, again, the weeds of the mechanism, maybe to answer council's concerns about, and I have the same concerns, like what else is there out there that we haven't explored? That's probably some of the reluctance about holding only 20% back. You know, there's always good ideas that pop up, although, you know, what is it, paralysis of analysis, at some point, the council's going to have to decide. But the mechanism may be the budget for the council, but open any suggestions from council, or from what you hear from the other cities as far as the mechanism to pass that along.
Yeah, thank you. So, yes, we are open to the budget mechanism. I think from other cities, it's similar. We are either going back for additional, with additional information. So, yes, we are open to come back whenever you see most appropriate, and we totally understand that you also need to see what other projects there might be local.
But we have to pass a budget by the end of the year, so that kind of forces the issue.
We are excited to have that deadline, by the end of the year, to have action, yes. That would be a nice, helpful deadline.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
So, we've got another North Star meeting with all the city council members at the end of this month?
Yes, September 30th.
Will you have met with, or presented to all the councils by that point?
Yes.
And I'm not going to put you on the spot now, but I assume you'll have some feedback about what questions or concerns they had when you presented to them?
Yes, that's correct. We hope to have a specific agenda item, just with updates, and just provide updates on how all those meetings went, and have a list of themes that came up.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini?
Just one quick question. So, is there anything in these three that kind of address more of the underlying causes of drug use? It seems like a lot of it is reactive, not that that's a bad thing. I agree with everyone that it's necessary and things that we need. I'm just curious if there's anything that, in any of these three items, that kind of target the underlying issues or the root causes, where people would start?
That's a good question. I wonder if, I think the Star Center, yes, because it provides co-occurring treatment, so that would work with folks individually to address the underlying issues. The bridge housing, because it's more short-term, I think it just provides that bridge while people are waiting. But I think you can look at it from the perspective of, if that bridge housing would not be available, people will fall back into the street, and they would most likely not even have a chance to reach treatment to start addressing those underlying issues. So, you could make a case of, yes, maybe not directly, but indirectly, also the bridge housing. And so, then, the- And so then, the recovery housing, I think it's focused more on that transitional, longer term, and that's when people can focus on recovery. So, directly or indirectly, I think all three of them, you can make a case for that. And George, you would like to add something else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you hit on the challenge for council is to kind of figure out, are there other things? Like I think Mr. Lunsford's proposal that he's potentially floating is going to go target youth. So, again, I'm happy to get input from council about how, with the mechanism, and how you all will ultimately decide on the 80/20 split, or whatever that split might be.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
And to the question of what mechanism would we use to provide this money to the county, which I think Mr. Fantini raised, I don't think I'm comfortable with it exclusively just being a line item in the budget, because suppose we're all in, but other cities are not, like then what are you going to use the money for? It seems like there should be some measure of accountability or exchange reduced to writing, so we know precisely what we're sending the money over for. And I don't know quite what that looks like, but maybe you get positive responses from all the cities, and it's just very simple, and it can be a very simple agreement. But an agreement would be the direction I would want to go in.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, any other questions before we let our county friends go? Well, yeah, so I wasn't going to put our guests on the spot for this one. If you have questions later for the council, we'll do that. That's unfair to them to put them on the spot. We weren't anticipating having direct questions from the public to our county guests. Are you willing to take questions from the public? Okay, good luck with this one. Okay, I saw some very enthusiastic hands come up, so come on up, right here. Yeah, we don't take the liability for these questions anyway, so.
Steve Anderson, Anacortes. So I noticed the word up there, "investment." So I'm sure everybody is pretty much on board what an investment is, as opposed to what an expense is. An investment, you're going to buy a CD, earns interest, dividends, or something. So if the city is going to invest, then the understanding is they get their principal back, including interest, or dividend, or something. Otherwise, properly label it as an expense from the city. I know the bean counter that you have, they're QuickBooks or whatever, they've got columns for investments, income, columns for expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, ma'am, yep, come on up. And now you got to come all the way up to the microphone, and you got to state your name and the city you live in for the record. Appreciate that.
Thank you for allowing a question from the public. My name is Susan Hill, I live in Anacortes. And when I read online about North Star, you describe yourself as a public and private. I would like to have some explanation for what, you describe yourself as a public and private partnership. So what is the private part?
So if you could, sorry, I want to keep the rules.
I'd like to know what the details are on the private part of the public and private partnership of North Star.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for those questions. So I can start with the last question. So, the public-private partnership refers to, of course, the public is the cities and the county. The private part refers to the community service providers who are part of the initiative. So there are lots of non-service behavioral health providers, from substance use to mental health, to also housing providers who are part of this initiative. So that's the private part of it. And in addition to that, since I also now have the microphone, the initiative also includes first responders and co-response teams, and we have representatives from school districts and from healthcare hospitals as well. So, I hope that answers the question.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, anybody else, the burning questioner comment? Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate you all coming, and I know we'll be talking very soon.
Okay, thank you so much, we look forward to coming back whenever you decide. And if I may have just 10 seconds, the last announcement and update, as we talked about the STAR Center, and George mentioned earlier that it's scheduled to launch in February, we do have a tentative ribbon-cutting ceremony scheduled for December 16. As we finalize those details, we would love to send out invitations. For now, it's just to save the date for that. So, and with that, we just hope to see you on September 30th. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you again. All right, on to item 6D, and 6D is capital facilities plan, and this is general government. So this is our first view of the general government, and we'll have all sorts of staff folks coming up. And this will be a little bit of preview of how we hope to present the budget. I think that worked out well last year, but this is... Whenever you're ready, Mr. Hoagland, although I think we're putting Museum on the spot first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Really feels like our first kind of kickoff of the budget season, if you will. So, looking at governmental funds, capital projects. So for the capital facilities plan, 2026 through 2031, the packet you have has the projects laid out in sequential order, and we'll go through those in that same order that you have them in the packet. So we have the first items. So the first item, we have Museum Storage Workshop. Counsel may remember, this was a project that was identified in last year's CFP. Work was started on that, has been continued through the current year, so is being extended to the 2026 timeframe. Mr. Lunsford is here, if you have questions about that. But please, so please let us know if you have questions about that. Again, this was...
Sorry about that, continue.
So this was identified in last year's CFP, which was actually for the current year that we're in, fiscal year 2025. This is a project that's being extended to the following year. If counsel has questions, Mr. Lunsford would be more than happy to try and address those. No questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lunsford.
Next two items, counsel may recognize from last year's CFP as well. These are in the current 2025 fiscal year CFP. These have not been started this year, and again, are being extended to the following year, fiscal year 2026. Mr. Coleman is here, if any detailed questions that counsel may have about either of those projects.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The, yes, the one that's on the screen says that the only change from last year was the updated amount. Do we yet have, what level of confidence do we have in the amount?
We have not received any, we haven't applied for any official bids or anything yet. We know we're still trying to do some footwork to figure out responsibility, so we haven't been able to really pursue that yet.
Okay.
But it is based on figures that, the amount per pier that the Fidalgo Marina Association did for their repairs of the same type of wall just this past year.
Okay, thank you.
With, you know, escalators and expectations for higher cost for Davis Bacon.
Okay, this is going great, thank you. So the next item is three police vehicles, so counsel may remember this as well. This goes back to the Levy lid lift a couple of years ago. We're finally getting to that point now where we need the additional patrol vehicles to support those five additional officers. That's what these three vehicles represents. And just to be clear, you will see this item again on tonight's agenda. So it's listed in the CFP, there are new vehicles being added to the fleet, not replacement vehicles, for the additional officers that are being brought online. And the timing is such for these vehicles that we would like to get these vehicles ordered very soon. So that's why it's on the agenda again later tonight for counsel to approve the ordering of these vehicles, so they'll be in place next year when we get those officers up to speed. So any questions about that? We have Chief Floyd and Mr. Ludeman here.
All right, they're going easy on you.
Fantastic, okay. That moves us into the fire CFP. First item in the fire CFP is the fire and EMS boat, fiscal year 2026, at 700,000. Station three generator at 100,000. Obviously, Chief Harris here to answer any questions. You might have either of those items.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Can you remind me what the $100,000 contribution is for the fire and EMS boat? Is that from the county?
Yeah, that's from Skagit County EMS.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Moving out of the fiscal year '26 into the fiscal year '27, the antique engine, fire engine displayed 150,000. And fire facilities remodel, this would be kicking off that long-term project fiscal year '27 of 75,000.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just, first of all, Chief, thanks for the kind of pre-meeting that you sent out earlier. Answered a lot of the questions that I had about this. I just have a question. So with that train shed for the antique fire engine, as I understand it now, it's being stored not in that train shed, the museum is using that shed as storage, and so the goal would be, once the museum has their new thing built, that the train shed would then take over that spot?
Yeah, that's correct. Currently, we're kind of waiting for the museum to finish their construction, and then once they vacated completely, then begin to look at renovations and movement of the antique over there, after a fundraising drive as well.
Okay, yeah, I was also noticing that it looks like everything that we're looking for money-wise is from contributions, so it wouldn't be necessarily a budgeted item, or it would be a budgeted item, but paid through private contributions.
That's the current plan, is to work with the Antique Fire Engine Restoration Group and a fundraising program to cover all expenses.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The generator, the boat, the fire facilities, no, just the generator and the boat, are planned expenses from impact fees. Assumably, those projects weren't in the CFP at the time we recalculated impact fees most recently. So what is our plan to recalculate impact fees for fire? And I guess my question is not limited to fire, it's for all the other impact fees as well, but what are, either your plan or your plan to recalculate the impact fees for fire?
So we're currently under contract with BERC. We're working through a new plan that where it would include the current CFP, they have this data, and then moving forward. So we're expecting by the end of the year to see a new CFP calculation, or impact fee, excuse me, calculation. When there was some legal compliance, some RCW changed in the way that we were calculating, I believe on single-family residents had to change, and I couldn't tell you exactly what that language is.
Yes, and I think that we have previously expressed a lot of interest in that change, which would allow us to adjust the fee based on smaller units.
Right, and we're still, and right now, they're still collecting data from us. We just sent another version of our call data off a few days ago. And so now we're waiting for them to re-contact to start the next meeting with us to start to adjust the new study.
Okay, great, so the upshot is it's underway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The concern will be, will the timing be satisfactorily to help counsel answer the question on the CFP time?
Yeah, I expect it, by the end of the year, the new, should be adopted by counsel in an effect, I would anticipate, November, December, based on our timelines.
Well, and also because the fire facilities remodel, which ultimately, I imagine, gets broken into multiple projects, because there's multiple stations, and maybe even an additional project for the train facility, depending on where it gets located. Because we don't really know much about that project at this point, because we haven't done the study that would inform the project, I assume we'll also be redoing the impact fee calculation later, after we have the study done.
Maybe, only thing I would say is I think we'll be, I'm hoping to be, in a sense, generic enough to talk about station remodels in our different city zones, or station additions and things like that. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be redone, the way I read the current study, and the way that the results should come out. We have stations one, two, and three, and as we talk about percentages, I don't think we have to have the exact details of what that remodel, it's very vague in the existing study.
When we have new prices, we can assumedly plug those numbers in without paying a consultant to do that work?
Understood, yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons we went with a larger number here to start, so we'd have some idea that we'll at least be ballpark when we get there, and not click in 1 million just as a placeholder, realizing that would not work.
Okay, thank you.
That all for fire?
Absent any other questions, then that'll do it for fire. Next up is fiber, access fiber. So everything in fiscal year 2026, wanted to just drop down, the funding resources are listed as fund balance. That's a combination of cash reserves that we have in place from prior-year bond issue and charges for service as those come in. But 35,000 in fiscal year '26, 35,000 for developer materials, continuing backbone construction of 100,000, installation costs of 580,000, and the node two, two-node fiber cluster network at 53,000. Ms. Hughes, available to answer any questions you might have?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Just a quick, I'm sorry, I missed, you said it's a combination of cash reserves and...
Charges for service.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walters.
In the past, we had removed a CFP project to extend fiber out Highway 20 and beyond in sort of the Marches Point area. Are we still, are these projects still consistent with our thinking there, which was that where we have extremely low-density development, commercial development? We're not planning to run fiber at the public expense to all of those areas?
That's a very good question, and yes, and as you remembered, several years ago, we removed the extension along the incorporated, unincorporated, I guess it was like along the Highway 20 corridor that's within the city limits, and we made the decision not to run that extension at this time, to look at areas where there's more density within the city limits.
And I think our thinking, and thank you, and good. And I think our thinking there was that where development occurs, they will be able to fully foot the bill for connections out there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes, if I recall correctly, we've got backbone fiber out there. We just haven't, like, you know, sort of spined it off or ripped it off to... We just haven't like, you know, sort of spined it off or ripped it off to basically feed all the, all the buildings yet. So if, let's say, a developer or somebody were to just move into one of the buildings and wanted to fund extension of fiber from the backbone out there to that facility, that's still an option.
That is an option, and we certainly would engage with them in terms of providing a quote for providing service to them.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Thank you. I was just curious why the developer materials for $35,000 is an ongoing yearly expense? I know it's, you're building infrastructure, but also, I always felt like capital facilities was supposed, wasn't, is kind of one-time projects versus ongoing expansion. Can you just explain to me why it's listed here?
Sure, that's a, that's a great question. So as we continue to have new building infrastructure within the city, as we become aware of rebuilds or maybe an area where there's a multiple dwelling unit that's going in, we provide the developers the conduit to be able to put that underground while they already have their ditches ready. So then we can then pull fiber to make it for easier access, easier to install them and, but through that conduit. And the, there was a conversation internally that we expect that there will be continued growth in the city that way through those new developments, and that it probably would make sense to expect that this would be a longer-term expense that would be going on year after year.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Just to follow up to that question, so are we reimbursed for that at all, or is that...
No, it actually ends up, but we're not reimbursed, but it ends up being a cost savings to the city because when the, the construction is underway and they're installing other utilities, they're installing that, that fiber line underground so that we just pull the fiber through. If we were to do that ourselves, it would cost more than just the cost of the conduit. So in, in the end, it makes it more cost-efficient.
Thank you.
Absent any other questions about fiber, can move on to parks and rec. So dropping down through the projects fiscal year 26, Heart Lake Restoration, West Side Park Construction, Skate Park Restroom, N Avenue Park, McCollum Barium Installation, Depot Plaza Expansion, Senior Center Space Upgrade, and pickleball infrastructure. And dropping down through the resources, you see this 50,000 in REIT, 75,000 in impact fees, 450,000 in grants, the majority at 880,000 in contributions, and then 220,000 fund balance, cash reserves. Any questions about the fiscal year 26 projects?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
On the West Side Park, what are we planning to do in '26 versus '27?
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So in '26, we are planning on using impact fees, and we're working now with a group, local group, that would like to perhaps do what we did at Picket Pocket Park and have a community service grant. That's where we put up money, and then they put in the sweat equity, they being at the time, Strandberg Construction. So we're looking at a relationship potentially like that, where we could do some first phases identified by the public in our public meetings. So that could be fencing, that could be irrigation, that could be drainage, and the hardscape, the sidewalks, et cetera, to get there. And then, working with community groups, identifying play structures that the community, the neighborhood identified they'd like to see there. So we would hope at least we would have the fence and grass installed, and maybe some of the hardscape and perhaps some playgrounds next year. But that will depend on how much donations we get in addition to the 75,000.
And the reason for the fence is that there's some topography that we need to deal with?
Correct, thank you for that. Yeah, so on the north end, the alley dips down quite a bit because it was a, it was a, it was a pond, a tension pond, so it's a little elevated, the fill-in is there. Also, just, we think that on a corner lot like that, if there's children playing ball games and such like that, just to have an entrance gate and then the fence around it four-foot on most sides, eight feet on the backside, would keep the ball and the children in the area and relieve some parental or guardian stress who are watching them.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
We've got a fairly large, on the revenue side, grants and contributions. On the contribution side, is that like largely coming from the, the Parks Foundation, or is this like just sprinkled throughout the community contributions?
Thank you, Mr. McDougall. On the grant side, so there's the 470,000 from the state, the Recreation Conservation Office for the Heart Lake Project. And there's the 700,000 from the MJB sale that's going to pay for the, the parking and restroom upgrade at the skate park. So those are the two biggest. You also have a Skagit County Development Grant of $250,000 for the Depot or Maritime Plaza Construction. So those are all the grants and contributions largely that are going to go into that. And then you have the Senior Center Foundation for the program space upgrade at 60,000. So we're a fortunate community, and we have generous people and successful grants that we've been able to put out.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Also, in 2026, we have the pickleball infrastructure project. And it doesn't quite say what that is, like specifically what we would spend the money on, but I, I would like to see us include a project, maybe this one, maybe by evolving the description of this one, to say that we would remove the pickleball courts from Clear Ridge upon identification of an alternative site for pickleball somewhere else in town. So not get too far ahead of ourselves, but to be able to commit to not having those courts in Clear Ridge anymore. Because I think we have heard pretty loud and clear from the neighbors that it's kind of an unsolvable problem there. And as a, more of a regional amenity, I think it deserves a regional location, and Clear Ridge isn't, isn't, isn't that spot. So if council agrees, I think in this iteration of the CFP, we should reduce to writing that plan so that we can motivate ourselves and others to really help us try to find an alternative location, or maybe more than one alternative locations that are more suitable for pickleball.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. So I think that when that was constructed in 2017, there wasn't the, they couldn't have imagined how successful that would be in attracting people. So eight years later, I think that if we can find and build it, build courts that would meet the need and more for the growing population, and then returning that to a tennis court would be a win for most everyone. You would remove it from that location, you would have a larger amenity someplace else that could accommodate the growing need for pickleball. As we've talked about before, pickleball is very popular, it checks all the boxes that we want. So we want it in the community, we want to meet that growing need. I agree that it's, that is not the place to meet the growing need. So I don't, I don't have an objection if you want to put a clause in here, or you want us to put a clause in here, saying that upon completion of a new pickleball facility in the city of Anacortes, we would convert that back to tennis, for example.
Yeah, I think, I mean, a lot of us have had a lot of conversation with the neighbors about that, and I think it would go a long way toward making the neighbors feel heard about the, the problem. And, but, but also, as I say, motivating us to try to solve it, not just us, but also the community that can help. And I don't think there's any need to cast blame as to, you know, what happened when it was put in, because I don't think anybody really anticipated that. But now we know, and now I think we have a problem that we need to solve. And I do think the neighbors, you know, despite the irritation that it causes them, would be very willing to wait it out if they knew that there was some point in the future when we were going to get the problem resolved. And so I think being able to articulate that in the description or justification fields here would, would really help us all.
Sure, we can, we can make that change.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I would also, like, not a change for this, but just a note, like, you know, we had a lot of good success when there was a capital campaign and a lot of very passionate folks that wanted a skate park in town that raised a lot of money. And I would love for those that are passionate about pickleball to come forward with that kind of initiative as well, because I think it would be well-supported by our, our community.
I'm not hearing any objection from council for the written change for the CFP, so. All right. Anything else for...
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Mr. Fantini.
One other thing, I noticed, because I, I always compare this year to last year, and I noticed there were a couple of things that have fallen off the capital facilities plan, so I'm just wondering if that is by design? Specifically wondering about the Cranberry Lake improvements.
So, oops, thank you for that question. So what we had talked about putting at Little Cranberry Lake was a dock of some sort on the, where the launch, where the boats are launched now just off the dirt. And so we couldn't find a design that met staff satisfaction. It would have to be overbuilt to withstand some of the wave action that comes from the south and to meet the needs of launching. So we're going to try a smaller unit out there on the east end to deal with pedestrian traffic and some of the erosion issues, and see how that holds. I don't think that will happen in 2026, we're still designing it. But that's our goal, is to start on the east end, deal with some of the erosion at Little Cranberry, allow a step-down in for animals and their pets, because that's largely what the ingress egress is on that side. And then see how that withstands, and see how we can engineer that for coming in tune with the aesthetics that are there and meeting the needs that are on that shoreline before we keep losing that, that eastern shore by the dam.
Thank you. And just a quick follow-up, would that come back before us as part of a capital facilities plan, or is that just something that would be done?
My, my guess is it would come before you in some sort of new study session model, where we have a conversation about that, because it's, people like to talk about that.
Thank you.
That particular item.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Also, Cosland Park wall repairs, it says it was in the previous CFP, but I, I didn't find it there. And the reason I was, was looking, because I was, I was wondering, do we, do we have a more urgent need than 2027 to do the work at Cosland?
Our, our urgent need is our stonemason will be retiring soon. So I, I think that that needs some conversation amongst my staff and then with some of our donors, how to create a, a fund to continue to do that while we have, Brian Elliott has been our, from Elliott Stoneworks, has been our mason for the past 20 years there. And not that there's others that can't replace, but Brian's done work there on the wall, the Veterans Memorial, other things that really fit in nicely with the park, he does an excellent job. So it's just finding a time to get in with his schedule and finding the work to do it, you know? So it's, it's likely we would come back to you in the future with another request on that.
Well, so it's programmed for 2027 now. My question was, should it be 2026?
I don't see us having the plan together by 2026 realistically to do that.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. So Gwimus Channel Trail, I see $400,000 in REIT in 2027, $328,000 in grants. Are those, is, is that, are those grants secured?
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. So remember the money that was going to come from the legislature? And every now and then, they come to us and say, this is going to happen, and then sometimes it doesn't get allocated. And so we've put that in there as kind of a placeholder for that grant at that time. I think working together with Public Works on that. So, and the 400,000, remember that was kind of earmarked for the EIS that council would like. So as we move forward, we try to hold those placeholders for that work to, to commence. So we don't have a, you know, you know, we are constantly looking for opportunities and partners who would let us cross their land. And so I think as hopefully that unfolds, we can find ways to then make a plan and then do the EIS that council's requested and move forward. So I don't, I mean, our plan is still vague because we just, we don't have the physical land to put it on for the extensions.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Do you have a, could you, can you provide us a fuller explanation of that state funding? I mean, I think I remember hearing about this before you became director, and it was slated for some date way out in the future, which maybe is still in the future. Like, what, what kind of money is that? And...
May I, may I request to be joined at a future council meeting by the Public Works Director and the City Engineer, and we would provide you...
Are those people going to have a better explanation?
I think that together, the three of us would have a better answer than I would now.
Okay.
Which is a three-word answer. I'm not sure.
Okay. And if we need to go find some legislators, I think, I think we, we know a few as well, so.
I think we could work with the mayor, at the mayor's pleasure, to find a time to schedule that within budget season and your other many obligations this time of year. But yes, we can...
Or a written snapshot as well.
Right, right.
You know, just, it just is, is kind of perplexing to me, because there was supposedly lots of money in the future, and I don't know if that date has come or gone, and I don't understand what the holdup was or how that worked, so.
You're right.
Mayor Miller.
I'm sorry, that's not, that's not true. That has come and gone. And Ms. Hubick apparently has something to say.
Ms. Hubick, thank you. Ms. Hubick.
Yes, thank you. My recollection is that that is coming out of the transportation budget, which is usually put together in a 12- or 15-year funding cycle. And I think that what was said earlier about like not having the land to put it on is one of the impediments in actually getting the money allocated. But we can, if, if someone would email one of the legislative offices, I'm sure that someone would be very happy to look into that for you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, I'm sorry, Ms. Moulton.
So I'm looking at the bicycle and pedestrian connection, $50,000 in 2027, $50,000 in 2030. Could you refresh my memory? Did we used to have $50,000 in each year for that, or am I remembering wrong?
So those are what we are holding with, working with the planning department for growth opportunities. So as growth continues through the system and we improve the transportation system, so to expand some of our trailheads to allow for better parking. So if we have an opportunity, say at 34th and T, to improve the parking there at that trailhead for the Thompson Trail, for example, then we would use that money at that time to say pave and stripe and allow for ADA access in connection to the trail, as those opportunities present themselves. So that's what those are holding space for. It's not that I know that I'm going to do that in 2027, but we'd like to hold this in the plan for the opportunity to do that as those, we make those agreements with those plant, those landowners and/or other opportunities that come up to give the public better access to the Thompson Trail, Gwimus Channel Trail, or neighborhoods where the forest lands exist that we want people to have access to. So that's what those are for.
Great, I really appreciate the, improving the infrastructure to accommodate safety access as well, including crosswalks or anything else that's necessary for safety.
Correct, thank you for that, yes.
All right, well, great, great questions, very helpful, and I appreciate the fact that I live in a community where council's spending the, maybe Mr. Lunsford doesn't appreciate it, but the most of the time talking about parks and recreation stuff, so I think we're pretty fortunate there. Again, this won't be the, this won't be the only time you'll see this, so great feedback. All right, Mr. Ogland.
Thank you, Mayor. So that concludes the governmental portion of the CFP. We'll be back next week with Public Works. Thank you so much.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Just one comment, I want to thank you for providing the hard copies of this. I think in this instance, it's really helpful to have the paper.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 6E. This is a contract award, actually, it's a purchase order, I think, technically. Three police patrol Chevrolet Tahos. And Mr. Ludeman, are you gonna, you've got this one? I think we know what, what we're talking about, but I'll let you go ahead and...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so this is just three additional vehicles for the police department that were originally ordered two years ago and canceled because the staffing levels didn't get to the point they were looking for. So the only thing I would say about this is we have a very small window each year to order police vehicles. If we don't get the... If we don't get these ordered the next couple of weeks, we have to wait until this time next year. And any other questions about the additions can be answered by Chief Floyd?
All right, any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Just one, and that is basically, is this the all-in price, or is there more after we receive these vehicles?
This is the all-in price. These vehicles will come turnkey.
Will they have signage wraps applied as well?
That's the one thing we do when they get here, is put the decals on.
Okay.
But they'll come with lights, sirens, everything else included.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Unless there's any other questions, I move that the City Council authorize the mayor to sign PO 25235 ERR 001 with Bud Clary Chevrolet in the amount of $274,124, $120.84 for the purchase of three police patrol Chevy Tahos.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to approve the purchase order as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And we are moving on to Item 6F. This is a continued discussion of City Council Procedures and Committee Structure Workshop. We'll, we'll try to keep, we're, we're not going to move down to the table, because there's not enough room to sit around that table. So, council, hopefully we can kind of continue on the good work that you all put into, is that last week, or two weeks ago, last week? But as I'm trying to stall for some time while you get your presentation up, Ms. Hugh, whenever you're ready.
I just wanted to thank, as, as this is coming up, I just wanted to say thank you to the, the council and department heads and the, the mayor for the good discussions that we had last week. And this is like, basically the, the second half of it that we're going to go through, so I thought I would just summarize real quickly. But I believe the intent is that even though you're sitting at the dais, that, that this will be more like a workshop in terms of conversation to, to continue that. And I look to the mayor to confirm that.
Please just chime in when we're, when you're ready, so.
So, I'm just going to really quickly, thank you, and I will just really quickly go through just a little bit of review. So, we have talked about the City Council Procedures and the Council Committee Structure, both at City Council Meeting in July and also at our Mayor-Council Retreat. We asked for staff feedback, staff and council feedback on that, which was then compiled into a presentation. I think we had seven different topics, broad topics of discussion. So, last week, we made it through, that didn't really sound, we, we discussed the changes to the committee structure, conduct of meetings, public comment, and the agenda. And so, the remaining items for conversation are ethics, the expectations of staff, and the Open Public Meetings Act. What our intention is, is that there are lots of folks here taking very detailed notes, and the, the intention is that Ms. Swetnam and I will then work to compile all of the, the feedback that we've had and heard through these meetings in the, the form of council procedures that we will, will then bring back to you, and you can look at and comment and, and discuss. But hopefully, we've covered the, the majority of those items. So, I'm going to just scoot down to ethics, and really the, the question that came up is, should we adopt, should the City Council adopt a Code of Ethics for all elected officials? It's my understanding that this was discussed at a Personnel Committee meeting, and that maybe that there's a thought that it should come to the, the full council for more broad conversation.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes, so, this was something that, that I had brought up, and we did discuss it at the Personnel Committee level. And there seemed to be, I had presented a draft that was maybe a little too long, I'm going to use the word long, but there did seem to be interest from the Personnel Committee to rework something of a Code of Ethics for all elected officials. This wouldn't just be for the council, this would include the mayor as well. My purpose behind bringing this up is a few things. One, as a new council member, there's, you don't really get a lot of, here's what you do and you don't do as a council member. There's a little bit of training that first happens, but, but there's not a ton. And so, this document kind of would help serve as a roadmap for, like, things you don't do, right? I also think it's important as a gesture to our community and constituents. I don't ever think that reaffirming or affirming a Code of Ethics is a bad thing for a council to do. In fact, I think it's something that you will see is in a lot of, of City Council documents for other municipalities. We do ask our staff to all sign and adhere to a Personnel Manual. I think it's kind of fair that we, as elected officials, have something like that, like a Code of Ethics. A couple of the, the things that are very important to me is, one, just defining expectations for conflicts of interest and accountability. And some of this is very, very briefly touched on in RCWs or, but it's not an explicit document. The other thing is being able to say when you are speaking as yourself, or when you are speaking on behalf of the council. And I'm going to use myself as an example. We don't have anything currently, right now, that requires us as council members, if we're going to send out materials, like, for instance, I do a Facebook video every once in a while. And I always put at the beginning and end of that Facebook video that this is me, Council Member TJ Fantini, I'm not speaking on behalf of the City Council, I'm giving my own thoughts and my own, my own opinions. So, I just think that those are things that could lead to increased public confidence. It also does align with best practices. A lot of municipalities have these type of codes. And I, I do think it would be educational for new council members coming on to have something like that as well. I'm just curious how everyone else feels about, about this.
And again, please go ahead and chime in.
I'm not opposed to it. I, my understanding was that we are understood and that we do not speak for council as an individual, that that's just across the board. And I feel like that's codified somewhere, just for that example. But I know this has come up in the past. Mayor Geer and I talked about it at one of our meetings, year, obviously years ago, and I see no reason not to do it.
The only thing that I have concerns about is any sort of redundancy. Association of Washington Cities, basically, does it mandate, or does it offer, like, that ethics training? I, I have a, I have a strong recollection of having to do something within the first 60 days of being elected.
Yeah, the initial, yeah, the initial training that's put on by AWC, newly-elected officials training, and it's, it's there.
You do, we do have that initial training. I would say that for me, it's like, that was kind of, as a new council member, like a blast of a ton of information, and then I kind of would go back to, like, well, can I do this again? Can I not do this again? I'm not, I'm not really sure. So, I do know that AWC does support having Codes of Ethics in, in city governments, so that, because that is something that is considered a best practice, that a lot of, including the current President of AWC did for, or the President of the Board, did for their, their municipality in Richland.
I, I think Ms. Ms. Hubick is referring to the Open Government Trainings Act requirements, which do not directly cover ethics. There may be others as well, maybe if she recalls, she could chime in. But the Open Government Trainings Act requirements is for OPMA and PRA compliance, talks about appearance of fairness. I've, I've taught this at the last two AWC annual meetings. But I, I think the point is well-taken that ethics, that ethics training could be very valuable, whether AWC currently has a class, or if we need to create one. An ethics code could also be valuable. However, a lot of the ethics ordinances that I've seen in other jurisdictions, having written one for another jurisdiction, involve setting up processes locally for enforcement of the ethics code, because most of our ethics requirements are already set by state law. And we can go beyond those, and maybe one of these is one of the examples of, you know, who speaks for council and making sure you include disclaimers, if that's what we want the rule to be. But the enforcement mechanisms that I've seen in other jurisdictions code become very complicated very quickly, and I don't know if we want to do that. I think if a majority of us can agree we want to pursue this, then this is an entirely separate project from the Procedures update for a number of reasons. And we don't need to get too hung up on it tonight. Probably need to look at other jurisdictions' codes, see what features we might want, and whether we need a code to address the training requirement. I don't think we do for the training aspect, but, you know, for some of those other features, we might. And so, that's probably a research project first, and then maybe a menu of options. And, but ultimately, it would yield an ordinance, I would think, since it would apply to two branches of government rather than just a resolution. So, I think it's a whole separate project, and we should more or less skip it for now, if, if, if we have already arrived at the question of whether or not we want to pursue it.
Yeah, that's the answer that I know staff was hoping to get, do you want to pursue it? And we can work on that, yeah, just chime in if you're ready.
I personally think that this is a great idea, but I agree with what Mr. Walter says. On the off-campus campaigning side, you've got the entire PDC to make sure that people follow the ethics of campaigning. So, if this is something that needs to get done, then it needs to also, like Mr. Walter says, have ramifications and, and an enforcement leg to it. So, I would, I would very much like to move this past this and just make a bigger project out of it.
Mayor Miller. Yeah, as one of the people on the Personnel Committee, it did come up with us, and it seemed like a larger discussion than just a, a committee level. My suggestion at the committee level was that this would be a topic for a retreat of some sort, to kind of really discuss that. I mean, you can go on the AWC, they've got a 100-page guideline. I'm inclined to say that not reinvent the wheel, and, and maybe it's more of a practice, and as we are going to adopt Robert's rules, do we adopt that AWC 100-page guideline handbook, since we are insured by them anyway. So, that's where I would be, I think ethics is always a good thing, and being really clear on how that works. But right now, I don't think it's something that we can resolve tonight.
Again, just to, to follow up on what Mr. Walter said, if, if it does, and I believe it should, include all elected officials, it would have to be separate, separate from council procedures as a separate document in that.
I also just wanted to say really quickly, too, one of the reasons I felt comfortable bringing this up now at our Personnel Committee, as well as in this bigger council discussion, is because I don't believe that we currently have a problem with ethics on our council. And I think that the best time to address a problem is before it happens. And so, that's kind of was my thinking around, around this.
So, schedule it for the next retreat?
Yeah, I, well, that's what I was thinking, you know, the next retreat. It would be tough to probably put something together to get it in the council's schedule, that's only going to get more full in the next couple of months. But it's certainly something that I, I think the whole council is interested in pursuing.
I'd be interested in seeing that AWC 100-page document that Ms. Cleveland McGrath is referencing.
Very happy to share that with you. And I think what you might be referring to is the AWC Guide for Elected Officials. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm looking at the Mayor Council Handbook.
Yeah, the Mayor Council, that's a, that's a great document.
That might not be directly on point on just ethics, though, right?
But it's a great document, though. I prefer to do it all the time.
And yes, we're happy to send that out. It's easily accessible on the AWC page as well. It's also on the MRSC website as, as well. Thank you for that good, good discussion. The, the next topic is about expectations of staff, and the things that were brought up in terms of comments are being, just to be clear about articulating the expectations of staff, providing materials in advance of meetings, following through on council requests, defining the city clerk duties, and a notification of potential quasi-judicial matters.
I might have articulated most of these for the list. So, expectations of staff, I, I think in our council procedures for our council meetings is a great time for us to say, well, what do we expect to come forward to us in the council packet? So, for example, I think we already referenced the Agenda Item Cover Sheet. I think our, our expectation collectively is probably that there be one and that it be filled out. If that's not our expectation, then please somebody chime in. But I, I think we should write that down and maybe flesh that out a little bit more, and then maybe also articulate a consequence for not having those materials ready. Pretty frequently, we get PowerPoint presentations at the meeting and not in the packet ahead of time. I think I'm, I'm, I'm okay with them not being in the packet at the time at which the packet is published on Wednesday. But sometimes the PowerPoint presentations introduce wholly new material that isn't in the packet at all, and then it's just kind of surprise, you know, you didn't really have time to process that, or think about it, or ask questions about it in advance. And so, that is a circumstance where, you know, the PowerPoint is not just some PowerPointized version of a memo or of a document, it's, it's actually new material. And that, I think, is problematic for us. The council frequently will make comments or ask questions or make requests that can't be instantly responded to, and I think sometimes we lose track of those. So, one idea I had was to task the clerk, who is sitting over there doing the minutes, with itemizing those and then making those available in some listy format, so that we can keep track of them and, and make sure that we ourselves follow up, because especially when we're dealing with material from every department, we are losing track ourselves if someone else isn't. And then, finally, the, the quasi, the last bullet here, when a quasi-judicial application that ultimately is going to find its way to the City Council gets filed, I think we should immediately receive a notification of that, because otherwise, we can't do our jobs of avoiding discussion of it. And even if we know that some kind of application has been filed, we may not be aware of where it's headed. Is it going to be approved by staff? Is it going to be approved by Planning Commission? Is it going to be approved by City Council? So, in order for us to fully comply with the Appearance of Fairness doctrine, I think we need to have some explanation of what the application is, where it is, what it is, not just the party names, so that we can keep track of that. And we used to generate that out of the Planning Department, a list of all the projects that are moving forward and where they are. I don't think that's what I'm asking for, because that's maybe a lot more. But the things that are coming to us, I think we need to have heads up on.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, yeah.
I am very supportive of, of all of that. The only thing that I would say I'm probably not as supportive of is just, I, I'm all for articulating expectation, expectations to staff with respect to council, but as far as consequences for things not being done, I really would prefer to leave that up to the Chair of the Mayor, whomever that may be, because I just, I feel like that, that kind of puts us in an uncomfortable position. And I also feel like?
I can go through some traditional Navy punishments.
Right, sure. I would also say, too, I feel like there are times?
Somebody thought it was funny.
Yeah. When we have articulated to staff, like, for instance, that we want maps, that we want maps, that we want maps, and then whatever has happened over there has led to us now always having maps.
Traditional Navy punishment.
Right. So, so I am, I am feeling confident that the mayor can handle consequences or, or fail, or failure. I don't think we, as a council, need to, to do that part.
How did I forget about the maps?
You will have maps, or you'll be flagged. Maps, or you'll be flagged.
But I like everything else.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one? Anything from, I'm looking at the two people over there that, you know, Agenda Bills and, and also the, the process of being able to provide those quasi-judicial, you know, heads up, substantial shoreline permit comes in, for example, let us, you know, let the council know. I think it's doable, right? Yeah, okay.
And, and I think that the conversation about the PowerPoints, if it's producing new information that's not in the packet, is, is important. But I know that sometimes those are kind of being put But I know that sometimes those are kind of being put together last minute. And I know, like, I don't want, I want to make it interesting for you. And so if you've already seen all the slides, you know, how interesting is that when I then go through it?
And that's a little, that's for public consumption also, you know, the council, you're expected to read the informations in the packet. And that's a lot of the reasons for the PowerPoint is also to help bring the public up to speed as well, so.
And I hope that I was understood that, yeah, if you've provided the memo, the document that is the underlying basis for the PowerPoint, then the PowerPoint summarizes it. For me, I have no problem with that if the PowerPoint summarizes it, it wasn't in the packet. If the only thing we get is maybe the cover sheet or something like that, and then the PowerPoint has all the meat in it, and then it's a matter of first impression on Monday night, that's where I feel like we get short-changed. And, you know, maybe that, maybe this list of expectations is introduced with a should statement. But at least it is, this is what staff should be providing. They should be providing the map. And then maybe there's some circumstance where that doesn't work, or it can't occur. We should be provided the PowerPoint unless it's just a summary, you know, or something like that. It's just, take the map thing. I think it's unfair of us to, it's unfair of council to beat on staff for not having a map when we've never said, well, we want maps, you know? And then, so now we know we need maps, but if there's staff turnover, we didn't write it down anywhere, then we're back where we started. So I think it's just very valuable to clearly lay out what we think we want.
And I think I also speak for all the department heads that we want to provide the information that you're looking for and have thorough and well-prepared documents. That's always our intention. So thank you just for the guidance about that. Sometimes we're up against deadlines, too. If we have a, you know, a holiday with a Monday holiday and a Tuesday meeting, and Wednesday, the next council packet goes out, that's a pretty quick turnaround. And so we're doing as much as we can in advance to try and have those things prepared. Mr. Franciac does a good job of keeping us on task with that, too. But it's something we certainly can improve on.
I'm having a hard time remembering when we got a PowerPoint like that, that was totally like out of the blue.
I can provide you an example, but I'm not going to do that here.
Okay, but, okay, I'm just going to say that-
It has happened recently.
Okay, I'm feeling like it's not a big problem.
Well, he's kind enough not to dime out the staff member.
I appreciate that also, I don't want to call anyone out, but I don't remember.
All right, what's next?
And then moving on, I think is the Open Public Meetings Act. And there are several bullet points here, I won't necessarily read them because maybe it gives you an opportunity to articulate what you're thinking as you put some of these together. And I think some of these, you know, may have come from us as well, and staff.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah.
I didn't write any of these, but I did read them all. I'm looking at number two from Councilmember Walters. Note obligation of staff to not schedule topics for multiple committees to avoid serial meetings. A good one for sure. I would also say that if staff wants to present or thinks they should be presenting to multiple committees, that should be an item that should probably just come straightforward to the full council.
Or that might be one of the situations where we do something in a study session format.
Or whatever the hybrid, yeah.
And there's a way to do that, to present to multiple committees without creating a serial meeting. But you've got to be really careful about it. And you need to be careful that there are no overlapping council members on more than one of the committees. So it's much simpler if, I guess, we just avoid it, which was, I think, my suggestion here. And then I think the first bullet, there's been some confusion. It's been my advice that a council member can communicate to the whole council by sending something out to the whole council. Just can't have a discussion coming back. And I think that we need, in our procedures, to articulate a legally acceptable rule there. The third bullet, I think that it is problematic if we have substitute council members popping in when you have an absence on a committee meeting. I think that's contemplated by the rule now. And if you're having a discussion about something that you've already had a discussion about, you could get to four council members and an OPMA violation. And then the fourth bullet, we have been doing this notice of council attendance for public events where, or some other kind of event where council members plan to attend. And I'm not very comfortable with that because that's not a formal notice under the Open Public Meetings Act. And if, I mean, I understand the intent there. But if there's actually going to be a meeting at some public event, then we should be telling people there's a meeting. And we should be telling the other council members that there's a meeting. And if there's not going to be a meeting, because it's not, there's not really even any council discussion at that event, then I don't think you need to do this at all. And this notice of council attendance, I don't think is any kind of prophylactic for the potential OPMA violation. So that maybe needs some more review or thought. But I think we should articulate in our rules what we do in that.
Yeah, that one came up a couple of times this year where knowing that a number, at least four council members were going to attend some meeting that was invited to, but, you know, they were expecting participation from council. Yeah, that one, that one kind of is a hard one. You want to make sure to inform the public that you're expecting a quorum. But is it really, is it really going to be an OPMA issue if there are four council members there?
It's a weird one. There's another jurisdiction that I won't identify that publishes agendas where they say, well, their electeds are going to be traveling together on a plane someplace. And like, what is your intent there? Are you identifying that as a meeting? Because the public can't reasonably attend. So I don't like that, never have liked that, but they continue to do it.
So with the North Star Symposium, how would that be addressed?
Well, since that one is specifically a meeting where you're expecting to have business, where the council is going to be engaging with each other, that is a formal notice. And I'm looking for Greg to-
At the beginning of session?
Yes.
But not the rest of the day?
But not the rest of it, exactly. If it was a symposium that you were invited to, that's where you kind of, I think we may have done that one, some sort of attendance, you know, in-between thing. But when it was a formal council meeting that the Chair called to order because there was going to be discussion of business that would affect the city, that's the formal OPMA or open public meeting notice, if that makes sense.
That may be a good clarification, that if there has to be a call to order, then it definitely needs to be noticed.
And I think that's certainly how my predecessor did it, you know, when we had some public meetings out in the street. You know, if you're calling it to order, that's the discriminator. If you're not calling it to order, it's something else that, you know, might be council members traveling on a plane.
Did we do some in the street that I missed?
Yes, we did. Yeah, but we, yeah, onsite, onsite-
Oh, site visits.
Site visits, yeah.
Okay, I see.
It was on the street.
What a great problem to have, that we have seven engaged council members that want to attend all these meetings.
All right, well, if you have better language, yeah.
I think all of these make total sense. And as far as the consider changing language in Section 105, like, you know, all the committees I have ever been on, like, if somebody doesn't, isn't going to be able to make it, we've never tried to find a substitute. It just, you know-
Yeah, we did some of that in the bad old days.
Did we?
Yeah. Because people were interested in the other committee, what was going on in the other committee, so. But it's probably not a good practice, it's going to lead to serial meeting.
Yeah, I'm good with wiping it.
And I think that the final bullet, just as to, just making some references to state law. Which makes sense, that council members aren't going to talk about things that are occurring in a study session.
All right, there is an asterisk on here, and I meant to do that at the very beginning of this, to not introduce the, but if any member of the public that's still here wants to comment on these items. Because the next step, as you were going to tell us the next step for councils, probably going to be some sort of red line.
There's one more page.
We actually have one more.
Oh, man, I'm trying to get ahead, okay. Please continue, miscellaneous.
But, so just one more page, and this was just kind of capturing some miscellaneous feedback that came in. And rather than read through each of them, maybe you want to speak to items that you've brought up or that the staff have brought up?
All right, go for it.
So the first bullet, I thought we would just recite what the role of the council is somewhere up front in the procedures, just so that if you're reading the procedures, you are getting that full picture. Making reference to the statute and not trying to modify any of it, but just, here it is. It's also replicated in the municipal code, but I thought that that would make sense up front. Other councils that are same form of government have council president positions that are separate from the mayor pro tem position. The mayor pro tem is called out in the statute, the council president is not. I think generally, the council president is imbued with some authorization to represent the council and not just fill in for the mayor. And so if we wanted to do that, we could create such a position, which would assumedly also be the mayor pro tem. So it would, you know, have those two titles, but it would be, it'd have some additional authority beyond what is in the statute. Wouldn't even have to create the position to grant that additional authority. But it might make sense to do so, because people might have a clearer understanding of what a council president is from a pro tem mayor.
I certainly have no idea what that, what that does.
It doesn't do anything other than what we would say it does. We would have to write down any additional authority.
So it would take the mayor pro tem approach would go away, and there would be a council-selected president every year or every two years?
However, we would write it. You know, the statute makes reference to mayor pro tem, so I think we basically have to have that. And then this would be an add-on, assumedly an add-on to that same position. But if you wanted to provide more authority to the mayor pro tem to do something other than just fill in for the mayor, the other statutory responsibilities, then you could rename it and provide that additional authority. Which is my understanding of what other cities that have that position do.
Mayor Miller, sorry. I have a little hesitation with creating responsibilities for one of us to speak on behalf of the council. I guess I would request that if there are others that are interested in this, and this is a direction that the majority want to move in, I think we need to have some very clear parameters laid out on what exactly that person speaks on. Because I know for a fact that all seven of us sometimes have different opinions on an issue. And what I would hate to see is a role be created that kind of circumvents our own opinions as individual council members.
So I'm not sure, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding why we would do this exactly. Because is this solely because we want someone to speak for the city as the mayor does? Ryan?
I just threw it out, I threw it out here because other cities have created this position. And I think they've done it for a couple of reasons. One, to provide a member of the council with greater authority than just the mayor pro tem has by statute. And also to give it, assumedly to give it a name that people understand what it means. Because nobody really knows what mayor pro tem means just by reading the title.
Sure.
But as a time-limited member of the council, I don't have really a dog in this fight.
Okay, I'm just wondering about like these two positions now that are both going to be confusing to explain to people.
Yeah.
To me, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, you know, glib, but I'm just not getting it. Maybe it's because it's getting a little bit later in the evening.
But in the council procedures, it has, there are additional duties assigned to the mayor pro tem, I think, that go beyond the state statute. Things like selecting committees and those kind of things. So you could add, if you were trying to solve a problem that this council president would solve, you could certainly add that to the mayor pro tem responsibilities.
Yes.
I guess my big question is, because I still, maybe I share a little bit of Ms. Moulton's brain on this one. I'm still a little confused as to what, all I can come up with right now is the council president speaks on behalf of the council. Is that what you would envision that role to be? Is there, I guess I'm looking for a list of duties for council president.
I'm not sensing a lot of enthusiasm for this, so maybe we move on?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
The next one has to do with ordinances that are vetoed. First of all, I think that there should be some upper limit. Can you revisit a vetoed ordinance from two years ago? Can you revisit one from a year ago? So there should be some upper limit on how long you have to revisit those. And then I thought on the other end, there should be a protocol for reconsideration of a vetoed ordinance. Because we lack that, and it can come up.
I'd like to see 60 or 90 days as the length at which you could bring it back, the deadline.
I don't see too many objections.
Because I don't understand. If an ordinance is vetoed, is it kind of like a double jeopardy murder rule where you can never bring that back again? Or we could always bring something back to be, right?
No, I think there's no time, I think there's that 60-day, that's why you put a 60-day.
You could always bring the ordinance back again, but then it could be vetoed again. The limitation would be on reconsideration for override.
I understand, thank you.
I'm fine with a limit, 60 or 90 days.
Because again, you conceivably keep going back and forth, and, all right.
The next item are some things that staff identified as we're going through that unless we are deciding to move to a committee of the whole structure, that there's some language that talks about study sessions that likely should come out unless we, you know, are continuing to work to the idea of having some study sessions. Then the following item is a line 7.4A2 with the practice of our unified fee schedule. It talks about setting our fees by ordinance where our practice is that the unified fee schedule is currently adopted by resolution. So just aligning our practice with what the procedures identify.
I'm fine with that one.
Yeah, there are just a couple of things that have to be adopted by ordinance, impact fees, but mostly not.
Ms. Swetnam, I can't remember what the next bullet was about the clarifying and defining the applicable rules.
I think the way the procedures are written currently, it says that council will follow applicable rules for input on quasi-judicial matters. And I think it was just a suggestion, maybe that we just don't talk vaguely about applicable rules, but actually define that we're talking about the appearance of fairness doctrine. I think we get there with some of the other cleanups that have already been talked about. But just to be clearer about what rules are applicable in those situations.
Sounds good. And then the final item was something that we've already talked about tonight, about that maybe it's not a good practice to allow a council member to take the place of another council member in a committee. And that was also the recommendation of city staff.
All right, now I can get to the point, anybody who stayed here wants to comment on any of this? Okay. All right, so again, great discussion. And now the next step is some sort of red line document timeframe.
Yes, so Ms. Swetnam and I are on that to put that together and bring it back to another council meeting. It's our intent that we keep this moving forward, knowing that we are in busy budget season, so.
That sounds great. And I just, since we're still in this little work session, I want to say good job, team. And thank you, Ms. Chu and Ms. Swetnam, for all your work on this. and thank you, Ms. Hsu and Ms. Swetnam, for all your work on this, distilling it all.
I, I just wanted to, because it wasn't on the list, because I, we didn't submit it as one of our memo items, the list of prohibited disruptions, I wanted to make sure we were going to look at that and get, we'll get legal review on that.
I have that on the list from last time that, for me to look at, yeah, thanks.
Probably just one final thing, is there anything that we haven't talked about that, that in this format that you would like to address?
There'll always be something that, yes, but, you know.
If, if you think of something, feel free to, to send it our way. And we can certainly, you know, put it into the, the red line and it can come in or out. So thank you for this, uh, part two of our discussion.
Okay. All right, we'll go back to, next item is item seven, and seven A is an executive session. Executive session will be a potential real estate transaction per RCW 4230-1101. It'll be approximately 10 minutes, so the council adjourn to the executive, move to executive session for 10 minutes and return at 8:40. Yeah, well, let's hurry up and get, and prove that we can do it.
Wait.
Okay, the council has concluded its executive session. No action was taken, and with no further business on the agenda, we will adjourn tonight's council meeting. Have a good night.